But it will be a very tiny tree. Okay?
This is true.
Only one though, okay? It's not gonna be a bad tree. Anyways, I need to find the thing. Make sure it's up. Perfect. Add to Q- Save to a playlist and that'll be study sessions. Good. And then we will share by copying link. And then after copying the link, I will post it here. Okay. We're doing the vocabulary now. Good. Good. Just to make sure, can you go on the internet and check if you can see the video?
Let me see. I don't see. Oh nice, you're the study session twenty-nine.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Six hour timer, starting up. Uh, okay. Google Timer. Uh, Google Timer. Google Alarm. Damn. Okay, you know what? I'm just gonna do it. Six hour timer. Set up. Okay, you, okay, I can hear myself. Perfect. Excellent. Well, now that we're here, let's begin. We're gonna be doing pretty much this for a few hours. Oh, uh, can you mute my video in the background because I can hear myself?
Hmm.
Good? Good. So let's begin. Uh, you want evens or do you want odds?
Each arc has a
Remember, you're gonna have to read them out loud, okay?
Uh, in the, okay, I'll have for odds. In the maximum flow problem, each arc has a hmm, which name is the flow through the arc?
What is it?
Hmm. It will be arc flow capacity.
Okay. If only a subset of variables are restricted to be integers, the problem is called a mixed integer linear program. You're up.
Minimize the total cost assignment of M workers to jobs. Given that the cost of workers i performing job is job j is Cij. It assumes all workers are designed and each job is performed.
Mm-hmm.
That one is the assignment problem LP formulation case studies number of tests exceeds the number of agents.
Okay. Remove the corresponding decision variable. Okay, let's see here. Valid in terms of revenue or profit. The prof- objective is maximizing profit or revenue. Assignment is unacceptable. This is wrong. The assignment alternatives are valid in terms of revenue or profit. Remove corresponding decision variable. I'm going to go with assignment is unacceptable. Is that correct?
Hmm.
You're up.
Yeah. What is the sum of a weighted payoffs for a decision alternative? Is a
What do you think it is?
The expected value of a decision alter- alternative. The expected value of a decision alter- alternative.
Okay. So what do you think it is?
Oh. The expected value of a decision alter- alternative.
Okay. I'll pick that one. At a dummy origin with supply equal to the shortage amount, assign a zero shipping cost per unit. The amount shipped from the dummy origin in the solution will not actually be shipped. That's when total supply, no, that's when total demand exceeds total supply. You're up.
A conservative dis- decision maker there will be, they will, the conservative approach will be used by a conservative decision maker.
Good decision analysis includes that provides probability information about the favorable as well as the unfavorable consequences that may occur. That is risk analysis.
Transportation, transshipment, assignment, shortage, wrong, maximum flow problems. Are
Well, what do you think it is?
Transshipment problems.
Hold on, that's only one of them.
Oh. What are examples of network problems?
It's all of them. Are variables whose values are restricted to be zero or one? If all variables are restricted to be zero or one, the problem is called a zero to one or binary integer linear program. That's, well, it's a binary variable. You're up.
Connecting the nodes show the deduction for influence. That's the line of for arcs.
Other criteria include time and cost. Neither time nor cost are necessarily linearly related to distance. Mm-hmm.
Other criteria include time and cost. Neither time or, or cost are necessarily linear related to distance.
You're up.
Needs the minimum payoff for each decision. Choose the decision with the maximum of these minimal efforts. Hmm. LP formation special cases, total demand exceeds total supply.
Depict chance nodes. Well, we know that squares are decision nodes. I swear if I get this wrong. Circles are oval.
Ovals, ovals. All supplies and all demands are equal to one, hence assignment problems may be solved as linear Hmm.
Oh, what do you think it is? Supplies and all demands are equal to one, hence assignment problems may be solved as linear programs.
Hmm, oh.
Oh.
They are equal to each other. Can you see? Is a An assignment problem is a special case of a transportation problem in which
Corresponding to states of nature. Round nodes corresponds to chance events. Therefore, states of nature, because states of nature are chance based. You're up.
A decision alternative shows the possible payoff for the decision alternative along with their associated probabilities. Um, decision analysis.
Is the ratio of EVSI to EVPI. I'm going to say that is that is the efficiency of a sample information. You're up.
If pick decision nodes, they are squares or rectangles.
We choose the direct, the decision that has the largest single value in the payoff table. Mm-hmm. The optimistic approach would be used by an optimistic decision maker. The optimistic decision maker uses the decision in the longest way. Okay. Let's see what we got. Almost, what have you messed up in?
Oh.
Um, an assignment problem seeks to minimize the cost, okay?
Oh. An assignment problem seeks to, okay. Minimize the total cost assignment.
Good?
Yeah.
Minimum payoff for each decision. Choose the decision with minimum of these maximum payoffs. A conservative decision maker would use the conservative maximin approach.
Why?
Well, because this is the maximum, maximum of minimum payoff.
Hmm. Hmm, paper.
Oh, the example problems? Okay, Jose, so we're gonna do that in about five hours, but you can also watch me speed through the assignment problems in the previous video. And then we also did the assignment problems in the first video. Uh, we, we will be doing them again in this video though. But remember, he said a lot of the exam is the terms, so we gotta make sure we study those.
Hmm.
For a decision alternative shows the possible payoffs for the decision alternative along with their associated probabilities. That's a risk profile. And then I got this one wrong. An optimistic decision maker would use the optimistic maximin approach. I believe that was stream twenty-eight, yes. But that one, I don't really explain it too well. I think you would be better watching the other one. Which is stream twenty-five. It's only conceptual for chapter six? Wait a minute, so chapter six has no math? Are you serious? Uh, no, though I've done twenty-five to twenty-nine right now for this one class. And Larry, I hope that's true because that makes it easier. So we choose the decision that has the largest single value in the payoff table. Well, this is all terms from chapters six, seven, and thirteen, so we're good. Okay. Maximin approach. Okay, so can we take this test again? Hanson? Okay?
Yeah.
You start.
Is that, we only go for the wrong one? Okay. So this one is a, a conservative decision maker who used the conservative maximum maximin approach.
Minimize the total cost assignment of M workers to M jobs, given that the cost of worker i performing job j is Cij. It assumes all workers are assigned and each job is performed. Okay. So that is an assignment problem seeks to. You're up.
For a decision alternative shows the possible payoffs for the decision alternative along with their associated corresponding probabilities. This one is a risk analysis.
We choose the decision that has the single largest value in the payoff table. That's the optimistic decision maker. We use the optimistic maxi match approach. Risk profile, not risk analysis.
Risk profile, wait, I got that one wrong.
Risk. What is a risk profile?
Hmm.
It's a quantitative analysis of the types of threats an organization, asset, project, or individual faces. Okay? Goal of a risk profile is to provide a non-subjective understanding of the risk by assigning numerical values to variables representing different types of threats and the dangers they pose. And now what is risk analysis? Process of identifying and analyzing potential issues that could negatively impact key business initiatives or projects. This process is done in order to help organizations avoid or mitigate those risks. So
Before enough.
So in a sense, risk profile is numerical and risk analysis is analytical.
Hmm.
Okay.
Analytical, analysis is analytical, but what's the, the profile?
Uh, profile is numerical.
The miracle?
Yeah, numerical. Go again.
Numerical. Okay. Yeah, this one is a risk profile. Payoff, decision alternative. Shows a possible pay.
Good. Let's take another one.
Hmm. Okay.
Xi j is greater than Lij. So what that means is that LP formulation special cases, minimum shipping guarantee from i to j. That's the formula for that. You're up.
I depict decision nodes. This one is a squares or rectangles.
A linear programming problem in which all the variables are restricted to be integers is called a all integer linear program.
X equal to Xj equal to Xi or Xj minus Xi equal to is a project, is a prerequisite for project j.
Is it prerequisite?
Yeah, prerequisite.
Okay. Satisfy customer demand for a product at minimum cost. Um. Isn't that what supply chains are designed to do?
Hmm?
Go.
Oh yeah, supply chain. Okay, we choose the decision that has the largest single value in the payoff table. And it's an optimistic and a, optimistic decision maker will use the optimistic maximum approach.
Uh, sure. Xi plus Xj is less than or equal to one. That would mean that both of them must be undertaken, but not both. Therefore, they are mutually exclusive. You're up.
So depict consequence nodes. This one is a diamond.
Sure thing. Corresponds to states of nature. Uh, that's what round nodes
Oh, decision node, okay. Upper bound of, on the expected value of any sample or survey information. Upper bound, let's see. I'll say the, the EVPI provision.
That is correct. Are variables whose values are restricted to be zero or one? If all variables are restricted to be zero or one, the problem is called a zero to one or binary integer linear program. That's binary variables. You're up.
S one plus S two plus blah blah blah, Xn e- less than or equal to k. That one means at most, k out of N projects will be completed.
Okay. Xi j is less than Lij. Well, I'm pretty sure the other one is guarantee? Maximum root capacity from i to j? No.
LP formulation, that's what I remember. Uh.
Yeah, it's A, it's A or C. LP formulation should use the objective is maximizing revenue or profit. I'm gonna go with A. You're up.
Hmm. And remove the corresponding decision variable. Remove the corresponding decision variable.
So what do you think it is? Don't forget, if you're in the audience, you're allowed to help us out. It's honestly more beneficial if you do that. Isn't that when it's unacceptable?
Yeah, unacceptable, the assignment.
You pick chance nodes, it's gonna be circles or ovals. You're up.
Uh, the consequences resulting from a specific combination of a decision alternative and a statue and a state of nature is Hmm. Consequences, payoff table, hold up.
Regret table or an opportunity lost table. The minimax regret approach requires the construction of a regret table or an opportunity lost table. You're up.
At the dummy origin, we supply equal to the shortage of assign a zero shipping cost per the amount shipped from the dummy origin in the solution will not actually be shipped.
Not actually be shipped?
Not actually be shipped. This is, yeah, LP for formulation special case. Total demand exceeds total supply.
Okay. Can be used to develop an optimal, wait a minute. Yeah, okay. Strategy when a decision maker is forced faced with several decision alternatives and an uncertain or risk-filled pattern of future events. Hmm. Decision analysis. You're up.
Hmm. Minimize the total shipping cost of transporting, transporting goods from N origins each with a supply si for N destinations. Each without demand dj, when the unit is shipping cost from an origin i to a destination j is Cij. It's a transportation problem. Transportation problem six-two. The first one.
We got a hundred percent. We did it!
What? Yeah.
Alright, so what this means is we're gonna take a quick break just to make, just to let this sink in. Not, not in terms of like work, but we're gonna we're gonna start doing one of the practice problems and then we're gonna go back to another Quizlet, okay?
Okay, one practice problem.
Yeah, the reason we're doing practice problems again is because well, they're gonna be the kinds of math that is on the exam and we kinda need to know it. So we're gonna do problem one first and then we're gonna go back to Quizlets. Because if this, if the entire video is just Quizlet, people are gonna get bored. And that's not good. We need them to be awake.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We are studying the terms in this part, for the most part, we just, we got questions to do. And doing questions is good. Okay. Uh, this, this. Problem one states what exactly? It says, uh, the following questions refer to a capital budgeting problem with six projects represented by zero dash one variables, which would be X one, X two, X three, X four, X five, and X six. A. Write a constraint modeling a situation in which two of the, of the products, projects one comma, three comma, five comma, six
Hmm.
Must be undertaken. So first, let me ask you a question. How would you write, how would you do this?
Hmm. Oh, okay, hmm.
Mm-hmm. Cause this is kind of what it's like in the Quizlet, if we had, we went over this one.
Hmm, okay. X one plus X three plus X five plus X six equal to hmm. Who?
Um, not equal to. That's a terrible three.
Hmm.
But it is two.
Hmm.
Think about the question again. It's not equal to, it's a different. It's different.
Hmm. Oh.
If anyone thinks they have it, you can, you're free to answer.
Hmm.
Okay. Two of the projects must be, but that doesn't say only can be, correct? You know what that means?
S one plus they cannot be what?
Well, it says that two must be, but it doesn't say that it can only be. Therefore, it's going to be greater than or equal to two. Does that make sense?
One, two.
Yes?
Okay.
Okay. Write a constraint modeling a situation in which if project three and five must be undertaken. They must be undertaken simultaneously. Okay, how would you write that, Hanson?
Oh, X three plus X five.
Okay. So
X three equal to X five.
Yeah, X three
Hmm.
Is equal to X five. But this isn't the full form. How would you complete the form?
Oh, X three minus X five equal to zero.
Correct. See? And that's going to be X one plus X four. Oops, wow, I'm, I'm about to give away the answer, no, no. Write a constraint modeling a situation in which project one or four must be undertaken, but not both. How would you write that?
X one plus X four. Xn or equal to one.
Correct. Now, why is it one?
I don't know.
The reason it's one is because they are binary variables.
Binary, or zero or one, okay, binary variables.
Yep.
Oh, then I got another problem, got another question about first one. Why is it that larger or equal to two?
Because at, at the bare minimum, only two have to be taken, otherwise you could take more. But you can't take less, that's why it's two. And it's two because one plus one equals to two.
Okay.
Okay. D. Write constraints modeling a situation where project four
Hmm.
Cannot be undertaken unless projects one and three are undertaken.
Hmm.
How would you write that?
Undertaken. Oh, right, X one greater or equal to X four. With X one equal to one. With X one equal to one, as for larger than. One.
Um, I don't think so.
Hmm.
And the other one will be X three greater than or equal to. Oh no, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. We're on D, right? Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
So, the thing with D, and it's a bit of a trick, is because it has to be. Two different. Two different constraints, it's not one constraint. Otherwise, it would just be easier. Okay, these are two different constraints. And now let's go to E again. And that would be in addition to the requirement in part D. Assume that when projects. One and three. Okay? Are undertaken. Project four must also be undertaken. How would you write that?
X one larger than X four, X three larger or greater than X four.
Well, no, that's what we just did for D, how would you do E?
Hmm. X four greater or equal to X one plus X three minus one.
Okay, why?
You subtract one to make sure that if X one or X three are equal. Then X four equal to one.
Yep, like this. Three minus one, but once more, what's the, what's the full form of writing it? How do you properly write this down? We're just moving variables here. Um, Larry asks the question, he said. Wouldn't it be equal to two because it's saying in which two of the projects must be undertaken? I know it's not saying at least two, but the reason it's equal to, it's, it's greater than or equal to. Is because there is no such constraint that says only two projects. For part A. Does that make sense, Larry? Uh, while he answers, you can continue answering, how would you properly format this, Hanson?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, so all we're doing is shifting the equation around, kinda like how we did here. So it'll be X one plus X three minus X four. Is greater than, is less than or equal to one. And that's how you do question one for, for the practice problems. Now that we've done that, we're gonna go back to Quizlets for a little bit, okay?
Hey, wait, 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 hold on, so. We reverse their positions, right? X one plus X three. Hmm. Okay, so it'll be one, okay, okay, that makes sense.
Good.
Hmm, okay, I call it.
Okay, perfect. Uh, does the professor's notes say equal to two? Let me pull them up. Okay, pulling out the professor's notes right now. For problem one, he said. Equal to two. Must be undertaken, yeah, to the projects, okay. Um, okay, so what the professor wrote, I see it. Now I know what you guys are talking about, so what the professor wrote in his A, so it goes. Problem one. A. X one plus. X three plus. X five plus. X six is equal to two. So that's what the professor wrote, okay, okay, now let me try to see if I get it. Must be undertaken. Uh, you see, I would agree with that, except there's something I noticed, if you look at B. Not B, uh. It's a different one. C says must be undertaken but not both, okay, never mind. Unless projects one and three are also undertaken. Hold on, I know the homework, the homework has a problem like this. It was a homework, was it five, six, or seven, Hanson?
It's wrong.
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Six, four, two, three, three.
It should be. I know it's not five.
It's not five, models. Hold on, I'm gonna check the homework right now, just for the sake of my own sanity as well. Because if I'm wrong, I don't wanna mislead people, that would be bad.
Hmm.
Okay, I'm unsangage right now. Okay, you might be right, Larry. Actually, there's a high likelihood you're right. Okay. So. Because all these questions are pretty much ripped right out of the homework, just shortened so that it's possible to finish it on the exam. So it's not, it's not seven, six.
It's one, six.
Let's try six, is there a capital budgeting problem on six? Uh, no, I don't think so. Let's check homework five. Um, okay, so homework five has these sorts of problems too. Thinking. No, I know one of the homework problems has a question like this. Just trying to figure, okay, okay, so let's look at question Brooks' development from the homework. Formulate a binary integer problem that will enable B D C to find the projects invested in. So it says at least projects one, three, and five and six must be undertaken. Okay, so the way it's done in the, on the Brooks problem. Just to, just to explain this, so this is a bit different. Brooks problem. And I'm going to copy and paste it so that I can't be shown. Oh, you're right, okay, so I was confusing it with the Brooks problem, cause the Brooks problem, what it says is at least. So that would make more sense, let me just paste it. At least two, whereas in A must be undertaken, so it says exactly two. Therefore, you were correct, Larry, it is equal to, I was just confusing it with the Brooks problem. Thank you. Yeah, I got it wrong, my bad. Yeah, okay, so I pulled out the professor's notes, you're correct. And this is why I like having a chat with me, because that means you guys can catch me on mistakes. Is there any problem you guys want me to solve, or do I go back to Quizlet for a little bit? Okay, I'm gonna go back to Quizlet for a little bit. Okay. Time to go back. Alright, Hanson, we're back to the Quizlets, let's do this.
Hmm, alright, hmm.
Start.
Okay, hmm.
Are you eating?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fine, I'll do the Quizlet for a little bit. Okay, okay. Determine the optimal decision strategy is based on a backward pass through a decision tree using the following steps. At chance nodes, compute the expected value by multiplying the payoff at the end of each branch by the corresponding branch probabilities. At decision nodes, select the decision branch that leads to the best expected value. This expected value becomes the expected value at the decision node, okay? Okay. Mm-hmm. So. The decision strategy approach is used to determine the optimal decision. Okay, have you finished eating, Hanson?
Yes, uh.
You're up.
Astral agents simply remain unassigned. Astral agents. Signed. Ah, damn it, I feel like I'm getting stuck on this one. Let me see.
We gotta know him, okay, otherwise, we're screwed.
Hmm. Hmm. Astral agent, okay, agent, agent, probability, hold on.
Um, remember, if anyone in the chat wants to answer, you're free to answer as well. It's, um, just so you guys know, it's the number of agents exceeds the number of tasks. A table showing payoffs for all combinations of decision alternatives and states of nature is called the payoff table. Yep, D. Okay, so I'm just gonna let everyone know, it's gonna be A, B, C, D. So the, this one here is B and this one here is C.
Okay, hmm. Other criteria include the time and cost. Hmm, neither time or cost are necessarily nearly related to distance.
C, yep, you're correct, Larry. The consequence resulting from a specific combination of a decision alternative and a state of nature is a. Payoff. You're up, Hanson.
Uh, transportation, transport man, assignment. E. Is revised probabilities are called, wait, what's that, this one? What are examples of network problems?
Correct, thank you, Jose, and thank you, Hanson. Depict chance nodes, circles or ovals, you're up.
The optimistic approach, conservative approach, minimax, regret approach. These three, they are the. The three com, the company use criterion for decision making and probability information. Network.
Yeah, the three, yep, correct. The L, linear program that results from dropping the integer requirements is called a linear program relaxation. You're up, Hanson.
Uh, variables whose values are restricted to be zero or one, if all variables are restricted to be zero or one. A problem is called a zero or one binary integral, binary variables.
Where to produce a product, how much should be produced, and where it is sent. That is what those who control the supply chain must make decisions for. You're up.
Hmm. The different states of nature while the branches leaving. Each square nod represent the different decision alternative.
Okay, I'll admit this one is worded poorly, it's A.
Uh, the branches are, the branches are indicators, yeah.
Yeah.
A, yeah.
That one is just worded poorly, that one's on me. All supplies and all demands are equal to one, hence assignment problems may be solved as linear programs. So, an assignment problem is a special case of a transportation problem in which all supplies and all demands are equal to one. You're up, Hanson.
A set of all interconnected resources. Using. Part of supply chain.
Supply chain?
Supply chain, yeah.
Solve as a maximization problem, okay? Hmm, are in terms of revenue or profit, you wanna solve that as a maximization problem?
Hmm.
D, you're up, Hanson.
Correspond to the decision alternatives, correspond.
I'm gonna go with B on this one, what about you guys? Anyone else wanna say anything otherwise? Yeah, Larry's correct, it's B.
Oh, B.
Okay.
Decision tree squares.
If only a subset of the variables are restricted to be integers, the problem is called a mixed integer linear program. You're up, Hanson.
Is a graphical device showing the relationship among decisions, the chance events, and the consequence. Uh. Influence diagram.
Correspond to the states of nature, that is, the round nodes.
Decision tree, round nodes, yeah. Uh, minimize the total cost assignment of all N workers to N job, given that the cost of workers. Job J is C I J, he assumes all workers are assigned and each job is. The assignment problem formulation special cases, number four, test exceeds, exceeds the number of agents.
Ready? Ooh, what did I get wrong?
The last one. Yeah, Simon problem six to minimize the.
That's what I clicked, oh, it's, yeah, okay.
My Simon problem seeks to minimize the total cost.
Yeah, it does.
My Simon problem seeks to minimize the total cost.
Yeah. Total cost assignment, yeah, it was A.
Assignment.
Take a new one. Minimize total shipping costs. Of transporting good from N origins to N destinations when the unit shipping cost from an origin I to destination J is C I J.
Always a Scott.
That's what the transportation problem seeks to, you're up.
Oh, I told you it was the assignment problem.
No, this is a transportation problem up here.
Transportation.
Total shipping costs.
Shipping cost, okay, the shipping. So if it's a maximization problem. Hmm. So if it's a maximization problem. Is LP formulation special cases.
This one? Did you say C?
Yeah. Wait.
Do you have anything to cor, do you have a correction, or are you, are you going with this?
Uh, going with this.
Okay, a linear program in which all variables are shifted to be integers is called a all integer linear program, you're up.
Hmm, solve as a maximization problem, again? Oh, it's a C, no, it's B, LP formulation special cases, the objective is maximizing profit or.
Good. A model which can be represented by a set of nodes, a set of arcs and functions associated with the arcs and or nodes. That's a network model, right? You're up, wait, is it? Arcs and or nodes. It's A, right?
Yeah, it should be it.
Okay, you're up.
Hmm. So, S I J greater than L I J. LP formulation, okay, should be. Minimum shipping guarantee from I to J.
Okay, greater than. That's maximum root capacity from I to J, I believe.
Hmm. And remove the corresponding decision variables. And remove the corresponding decision variables. Remove the corresponding decision variable.
Yes.
Remove and then total demand exceeds total supply.
Are you sure? Cause I'm pretty sure this is just remaining unassigned or something like that. Unless you're telling me you think it's right.
Remove the corresponding decision, let's see. If I remove it, what does it mean?
Uh, Larry posted B, unacceptable route.
Unacceptable, but why is it unacceptable?
Because, when, when the root is unacceptable, you just can't pick it. When X I and X J represent blank designating whether projects I and J have been completed, the following special constraints may be formulated. Binary variables, you're up.
Can be used to develop an optimal strategy when the decision maker is faced with several decision alternatives and uncertain or risk feel feel, feel, future events.
What do you think? Several decision alternatives and uncertain or risk feel pattern of future events. Can be used to develop an optimal strategy when the stream makers face with several decision alternatives, certain risk feel pattern of future. I would go with A, what about you, Hanson?
Decision analysis, eh, oh yeah, yeah, decision analysis.
Regret table or an opportunity loss table. The minimax regret approach requires the construction of A, you're up.
Satisfy customer demand for product at minimum cost, that is in general, supply chains are designed to
In general, supply chains are designed to, perfect. Okay. Is a graphical device showing the relationship among the decisions, the chance events, and the consequences, that's an influence diagram. You're up.
Depict consequences nodes, eh, diamonds.
Correct. Diamonds. The optimistic approach, the conservative approach, the minimax regret approach, those are the common, commonly used criteria for decision making when probability information regarding the likelihood of states of nature is unavailable. You're up.
The maximum possible cost is minimums. If the payoff was in terms of costs, the maximum cost would be determined for each decision and then the decision corresponding to a minimum of this, the maximum cost is selected.
What does that mean? This one, B? Or A, or D? D?
Yeah. Payoff was in terms of costs.
Payoff was in terms of, so you're saying it's D?
Yeah.
Okay. Good decision analysis includes blank that provides probability of information about the favorable as well as the unfavorable outcomes, risk analysis, you're up.
Is consumed determining, yeah, okay, the maximum volume of flow from one node called source to another node called sink. Node and sink, the maxim, maximum flow problem. Is B, you know, C.
Okay, my turn. Is concerned with finding the shortest path in a network from one node or set of nodes to another node slash set of nodes, okay. Yeah, short is your problem, you're up.
Might, what, iconic, canonical representation of a decision problem? Canonical, if it's about timelines.
You got this.
Canonical. Decision problem.
Larry has said C.
Yeah, decision tree, yeah.
Okay, that's mine. Hundred percent, amazing, we're so good at this, right?
Yeah. I'm not without struggles.
Well, yeah, but you know what, at least we're struggling here and not on the exam. We struggle on the exam, that's bad. That's the way I see it anyways. Okay, problem two. Every time we get a hundred, we just do a different problem, that's how I'm gonna do it from now on. That way, we're just practicing while also giving our brain time to rest. Without stopping. That way, we can remove the effects of monotony and exhaustion. While gaining all the benefits. Substations. Oh, you know what, screw writing problems, I'm just gonna write A, cause the only part is A. Formulate an integer programming model that could be used to find the minimum number of locations necessary to provide coverage to all areas. And I'm gonna write, I'm gonna draw the table by hand, cause that's just easier. So it's gonna be potential locations, uh, for substations and then areas covered. It'll be A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And then here will be one comma, five comma, seven. One comma, two comma, five comma, seven. And for C, it's going to be one comma, three comma, five. And for D, it's going to be two comma, four comma, five. E will be three comma, four comma, fi- comma, six, I bet, comma, six. And then up next will be F, which is four comma, five comma, six. And finally, we have G, which will be one comma, five comma, six comma, seven. So, what I'm gonna ask you to do is to formulate the integer linear programming model. So first, I gotta ask you a question, are we maximizing or minimizing?
Well, minimizing.
Correct, why?
Because objective function is to minimize the number of substitutions.
Correct. And now, let me ask you this, what are gonna be the variables for all the X's? The variables, the subscripts?
X A plus X B plus X C plus X D until X G.
Yep. That's X D plus X E plus X F plus X G. Correct, now we gotta do subject two. What are we subjecting this to?
Subjected to?
The constraints. So, how would you write the first constraint? And what is the constraint for?
X A plus X B plus X G, all the way to X G, the, then is greater or equal to one.
Can you say it again?
X A plus X B plus X C plus X D plus X E plus X F plus X G. Greater or equal to one.
I think I, I don't think that's it, I might be wrong. But the way I see it is, we're doing all of them for the areas covered. So say, we do area covered one. That would be X A, because there's an, there's a one after the A. Plus X B, because there's a one after the B. Plus X C, because there's a one after the C. Plus X G.
G.
Because there's a one after the G. And then it's going to be greater than or equal to one, because there's gonna be at least one. Now you know that, how do we do the rest of them?
And then there's X B plus X D, greater or equal to one.
Correct. What's the next one?
There is X D plus X E plus uh, no, no. Area C, no, area three is X C plus X E.
Yep.
Greater or equal to one.
Correct. And now, let's do it for the fourth one, how would you write it down?
Uh, X B plus X D plus X E.
This is for four. B doesn't have four.
Oh yeah, it's X D plus X E plus X F.
X D plus X E plus X F, greater than or equal to one. And the reason it's all gonna be greater than or equal to one, cause we need to have at least one police station. Well, actually, substation, my bad, substation. Then we have for area then we're gonna do for area five, it's gonna be X D plus X, oops, not X D. Area five's actually the longest one. Five is gonna be X A plus X B plus X C plus X D plus X F plus X G, is that correct? Yes or no, is that correct?
Yeah, for I, area five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the next one is gonna be for area six. How'd you do it?
X E plus X F plus X G equal to equal to one. Greater or equal to one.
Okay. Here are equal to one, let me fix that greater than, cause that is not a good greater than or equal to. Okay, greater than or equal to one, and now let's do it for seven.
Then is X A plus X B plus X G.
Greater than or equal to one. And now, we're missing one more constraint, what constraint is it? Let's see if you guys know it.
X I equal to zero or one. I equal to A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Yep, I'm just gonna write over this, so, X I is equal to zero or one. Colon, I is equal to A comma, B comma, C comma, D comma, E comma, F comma, G. Yep. And then, we're not gonna do the solver, because it's not possible to do it without a solver. Well, it is, but we would be here for days, because you'd have to use like differential calculus and matrices, and he didn't teach that. Good, now we're back to Quizlet. Alright, take a new test. If only a subset of the variables are should be integers, the problem is a mixed integer linear program, you're up.
The set of all interconnected resources involved in producing and distributing a product is supply chain.
Is the increase in the expected profit that would result if one knew with certainty which state of nature would occur? That is estimated value of perfect information. You're up.
S I J smaller than L I J. It's LP formulation special case, the objective is maximizing pop- or revenue.
Wait, really? Are you sure?
S I J Oh, no, no, not there, um Oh yeah, maximum load capacity from I to J.
Okay. Sorry, I had to respond to a message. The linear program that results from dropping the integer requirements is called a linear program relaxation, you're up.
Um, relaxation. Correspond to a state of nature. Correspond to the state of nature.
In the tree round nodes, it's B. Upper bound on the expected value of any sample or survey information, that's what EVPI provides, you're up.
Uh, S one plus S two plus X N, that's equal to K. And most K out of N projects will be completed.
A linear program in which all the variables are restricted to be called integers is an all integer linear program, you're up.
In transportation, transshipment, uh, transshipment and assignment short as well a maximum flow problem. Examples of network, network problems.
The three commonly used criteria for decision making when probability information regarding the likelihood of the states of nature is unavailable are optimistic approach, conservative approach, and minimax regret approach, you're up.
Depict consequences nodes, then, then
Solve as a maximization problem, the objective is maximizing profit or revenue, you're up.
Osteri-
Sorry.
Osteria probabilities. Osteria probabilities. And revised probabilities. These revised probabilities are called
Yep, correct. The maximum possible cost is minimized. Okay. Okay, so, if payoff was in terms of costs, the maximum cost would be determined for each decision. And then, the decision corresponding to the minimum of the maximum cost is selected, hence the maximum possible cost is minimized, you're up.
Remove the corresponding decision variable.
Wait, did somebody say A?
Is unacceptable formulation special cases, unacceptable result.
Solve as a maximization problem. That is, the assignment alternatives are evaluated in terms of revenue or profit, you're up.
Regret table or an opportunities table. Opportunity nodes. A minimax regret post requires the constitution of minimax regret approach.
Okay, so, equals two, that means they must both be taken together, they're co-requisite, am I correct on that one, is it a co-requisite?
Yeah, co-requisite.
Yeah, okay. You're up.
Are variables whose values are restricted to be zero or one, if all variables are restricted to be zero or one, the problem is Zero to one or binary intake. Finally, variables.
Ooh, we got something wrong. What did we get wrong? It's not a co-requisite, air conditional. I misread it. I misread it. They're conditional. Because it's greater than. Not. Not equal to, yeah. Conditional, damn it, okay, that's fine. That's fine, that's fine, I messed up. We'll take it again. The linear program that results from dropping the integer requirements is called the linear relaxation. You're up.
Uh, in a balanced transportation problem. The total supply is equal to a total demand. All constraints are must be binding. It becomes relatively easy to find a feasible solution. Balanced transportation problem are easier to solve. Uh, the balanced transport, transportation problem.
Okay. The states of nature that are best probability values available at the time. B. You're up.
If only. A subset of all the variables are restricted to be integers, problem is called a mixed integral linear problem.
Where to produce a product, how much should be produced, and where it should be sent. That is what. Those who control the supply chain must make decisions about.
A set of all interconnected resources involved in producing a product. Supply chain.
Is a graphical device showing the relationships among the decisions, the chance events, and the consequences. Influence diagram. You're up.
The optimistic approach, the conservative approach, and the minimaps approach. Three commonly used criteria for decision making. When probability information.
Is concerned with finding the shortest path in a network from one node, minimal. Shortest route problem. You're up.
The different states of nature while the branches leaving each square node represent the different. The branches leaving each root node represent.
B? Did you say B?
Yes.
Connecting the nodes show the direction of influence. Lines are X. You're up.
Is concerned with determining the maximum. Volume of flow from one node. The sink. The maximum flow problem.
Okay. We choose the decision that has the largest single value in the payoff table. Maxi max approach. You're up.
Maximum approach. Determine the optimal decision strategy is based on the backward path through the decision tree using the following steps. At chance laws. Compute the expected value by modifying the payoff at the end of each branch are the corresponding branch probabilities. At decision nodes. Select a decision branch that leads to the best expected value. Expected value becomes the expected value at the decision. Uh, run notes. Optimal decision strategy. Decision strategy. Is decision strategy approach is used to.
Can be developed for the maximal flow problem. That is. Hold on. Oh, incapacitated transshipment model. You're up.
S I plus X. X J, less or equal to one.
Oh. I know this one. Chat, do you know it? No? They're mutually exclusive, means you can't have one and the other, yep. Thank you, Larry. Yep. Add a dummy origin with supply equal to the shortage amount, assign a zero shipment cost to you per unit. The amount shipped from the dummy origin. In the solution. Will not actually be shipped. Well, that is when there's too much demand, not enough supply. Wait, did I get that wrong? No, I didn't. You're up.
Hence, the maximum possible cost is minimized. Hence, the maximum possible cost is minimized.
Yep.
If a. If a payoff was in terms of cost. The maximum cost will be determined for each decision and then the decision corresponds to a minimum of. Of this maximum cost is negative.
So A.
Yes.
Other criteria include time and cost. Neither time nor cost are necessarily linearly related to distance. The criterion to be minimized in the shortest route problem is not limited distance, even though the term shortest is used in describing the procedure. You're up.
Full decision analysis includes. That provides probability information about. Arc. Decision analysis. I over, no.
No.
Risk analysis, yeah.
Okay. What should be decision analysis? Okay, we did it, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're that awesome, aren't we? Okay, time to do project three. Problem three. One constraint. The president imposed. Is a. Team size of three. Five or seven. Members. The current model. Requires that team members. Be selected. From three departments. And uses the following. Variable definitions. And that would be X one is equal to the number of employees selected. From department one. X two is equal to the number of employees selected from department two. And X three equals the number of employees selected from department three. Show the staff. How to write constraints that will ensure. That the team will consist of three, five, or seven employees. The following. Integer variables should be helpful. Okay, and the following integer variables are Y is equal, Y one is equal to. Open bracket. Uh, one. If team size is three. Zero otherwise. Y two is equal to. One if team size is five. Zero otherwise. And Y three is equal to. One if team size is seven. Zero otherwise. Okay, so Hansen, how do you think we start this question?
But I need to note that the team size equal. S one plus S two plus X three.
Okay. What else is missing?
Um, equal to. Something about the three, five, seven.
Three Y one plus five Y two plus seven Y three. Okay? That's one constraint. What's the second constraint?
Uh, Y one partial Y two plus Y three equal to one.
And the reason for this is because. We can, we may. Only. Select. One of the amounts. And that's it for pro, for problem three. Any questions?
Uh, shit. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Hmm.
Easy, right?
Oh, Y does equal to one again.
It's still that we can only choose one of the possible sizes.
We might only choose one of a possible. Sizes.
Yeah.
Hmm.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, time to go back to Quizlet. Take a new test. Okay, refer to future events not under the control of decision maker which may occur. Their states of nature. You're up, Hansen.
State of nature always, I can't go back to it, I need to memorize this. What is a state of nature again?
Refer to future events. Yeah, go for it, read it out loud if you want.
Not under the control of a decision maker which may occur. State of nature should be defined so that they are mutually exclusive and connectively exhaustive. State of nature, okay.
Good.
Right, second one. Correspond to the decision alternatives. There are. Decision, decision tree squared.
Okay.
Eight.
Minimum of the maximum regret, that is with the mixing that regret approach, that's wrong. You're up.
Needs the minimum payoff for each decision, choice of decision with the maximum of these minimal payoff.
How about it, chat? Any of you guys have an answer?
And. True list. Formulation. Maximum of this minimum payoff, maximum.
You're saying C, Larry? Why?
Minimum payoff for each. Yeah, conservative decision maker.
You're saying C as well, Hansen?
Yeah, yeah, C.
Depicts decision nodes squares or rectangles. You're up.
Transportation, transshipment, assignment, short as well, and maximum flow problem. Yeah, all the examples of network problems.
Okay. Table showing payoffs of the combinations, decision turn is a stage nature is called the payoff table. You're up.
It could extra, extra agents simply remain on the side. Um. Is the assignment problem LP formulation.
Agent, yep. Decision yielding the best expected return is chosen. You're up.
Add enough dummy agents to equalize the number of agents and the number of tests. The agent. The. Objective function coefficient for these new variables will be zero.
And how would that work?
Number of tests exceeds the number of agents A.
Depicts chance nodes circles rules. You're up.
If it turns. All of those. Chance, okay. The decision with the largest possible payoff is chosen. If a payoff table was in terms of cost, the decision with the lowest cost would be chosen. Whether. Um. Are optimistic.
Okay. Satisfy consumer demand for a product at minimum cost. It's what supply chains are designed to do. You're up.
You'll choose a decision that has a largest single. Is. A optimistic approach will be used by an optimistic decision maker.
Okay, Larry says it's C. Good decision analysis includes risk analysis that provides probability of information about favorable versus unfavorable consequences that may occur. You're up.
S I plus X J. Less or equal to one.
Five, four, three, two, one, it's B.
Um, B. You're so exclusive, what?
Okay, so, you know what, let me just take over for a second. The reason it's mutually exclusive, so let's say X one plus X two, less than or equal to. Less than or equal to one, and then we'll say let X. Of Y be binary. And Y is equal to one comma two. Then that means we can have either of them, so. If X one equals to one, then X two equal to zero. And vice versa, and at the same time, we can just have both equal to zero. However, we cannot have both of them, that's why they're exclusive. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Unless someone likes to tell me otherwise. The linear program that results from dropping the integer requirement is called the relaxation LP of the ILP. You're up.
Depict consequential nodes diamonds, always give me diamond.
So lucky. Different states of nature, while the branches leaving each square nodes represent the different decision alternatives. That is what branch is leaving each round node represent. Okay, you're up.
Optimistic approach, conservative approach, and minimal. Regret approach, and three commonly used criteria to decision making.
Congratulations. We're getting a hundred percent more and more frequently, isn't that a good thing, guys?
Yeah. Most of it is thanks to you, yeah.
Yeah, when we were doing this with, um, King, I just. I don't think we got a single, I think we got like one, one hundred percent. The whole time. Payoff table shows profit for a decision analysis problem with. Two decision variables, alternatives. And three states of nature, okay? And then I'll draw the table here, that would be decision alternatives. S one. S two. And S three. These are state of nature. And to separate these, I'm gonna do a good underline, shift, control U. Can't do underline on notepad, good to know. D one and D two. D one and D two. Then over here on the states of nature, it's gonna be two fifty. A hundred and twenty-five. Then over here, it's going to be a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five. Good. Construct a decision tree for this problem. I'm so sorry, Hansen. We have to make a tree!
Yeah.
Don't worry, this tree is actually really. It's about time, right?
Hmm, God, I wish I forget about it tomorrow.
I mean, okay, admittedly, the trees aren't very hard considering how many we did.
Hmm.
So let's begin with A.
Hmm.
And the A is to construct a decision tree. So first, we have our first node, node one. And we're making a decision, so it's a box. Bam, bam, decision one, decision two. Next will be node two and three, and then following that move the circles because we're about to perform the states of nature. Which is S one, S two, and S three. And for three, we also have the same thing. S one, S two, and S three. And to let you know which numbers go where, we put two hundred and fifty over here, we put one hundred over here. And we put twenty-five over here. And over here, we're going to have a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five. This, this tree was super easy. If you guys wanna see me do a real tree, go look up the second part in linear programming. Hansen, while I write this down, would you like to inform the audience about that tree I made in the previous, the first day?
Yeah, that's a huge tree. Almost bigger than the ones in the yard.
Almost as big as the ones in the yard. Yeah. Okay, probabilities of the three states of nature. What is the recommended decision? Using the optimistic, conservative, and minimax regret approaches? Alright. Let's do part B. Part B is also really easy, you'll learn it or not. So let's have fun with it. So, to start part B. We're gonna have a great time. And that starts by performing each approach. We're gonna start with the optimistic approach. Optimistic. Approach. And that is decision. And max. And the decisions will be D one and D two. And the max of D one is two hundred and fifty, because if you look at this tree over here, here it is. And the max of D two is a hundred. You can get that from the tree as well. And now that we have that, we can say. Optimistic. Approach. Will. Choose. D one. There's actually two O's in choose. I think there's two O's in choose. Let me fix my spelling. And now we're gonna go to the conservative approach. Conservative. Approach. And that will go back to decision. And min. And that min will also be very min considering the minimum of D one is twenty-five. And the minimum of D two is. Seventy-five. That goes for D one and D two. Therefore, the conservative. Will choose. D two. And then for D three. The mini. Max. Regret. Approach. That young sap. Has to first the, the table, so D one and D two. S one. S two and S three. And that will pretty much leave us with two fifty minus two fifty equaling zero. Two fifty minus a hundred. And the reason I'm subtracting, I'm starting with two fifties because it's the biggest of the S ones. Two fifty is bigger than a hundred, so we subtract by two fifty, two fifty minus the base. And this will give us one fifty. Since S two are both equal to the same number, we know for feathers is gonna be zero and zero. Then we have S three, which is going to be seventy-five minus twenty-five, which equals to fifty. And seventy-five minus seventy-five equals to zero. Therefore, if we look at the new table, decision. And then it's maximum regret. We know that it'll be D one and D two. And the regrets will be. For D one, it's gonna be fifty, and D two, it's gonna be one fifty. Therefore. Uh, minimax. Regret approach. Selects. D one. We select D one because we don't lose as much. This is how much we regret. Which is good enough. Did that make sense, Hansen?
Yes.
Good. Good, 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 good. Up next, we have suppose that the decision maker obtained the probability. Assessments. P of S one is equal to zero point six five. P of S two is equal to zero point one five. And. P of S three is equal to zero point two. Because that's what we're doing now. We use the expected value approach. To determine the optimal. Solution of decision. There we go. There we go. So, do you know how you do that, Hansen?
So. P S one, P S two, and P S three.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I zero pi six five, zero pi one five, and the zero pi two.
Yes.
Hmm. And then we use them to calculate for E V. D one, E V D one. Just blocking. Uh, four hundred fifty, one hundred and twenty-five.
Uh, that is correct. So we're pretty much going to calculate for D one, so. E V of D one. Hi, have you been practicing Quizlet's King?
Um. I can only do it once, so I'm gonna save it.
Okay. Six five, two fifty. Well, at least make flashcards.
Yeah, like, uh, when I, when I go into that Quizlet, does it show like all the definitions and whatnot?
Assuming you have Quizlet, yes.
Yeah. Okay, okay, alright, I'll, I'll, I'll probably do that.
Plus zero point two. Multiplied by twenty-five. And that will be equal to. A hundred and eighty-two point five. Does that make sense, everybody?
Hmm. Yes.
Yes? Good.
See, this E V, okay, yep.
And now we're going to do E V of D two. The estimated value of D two will be equal to. Zero point six five multiplied by a hundred. Uh, screen is frozen, thank you. Plus. Zero point one five multiplied by a hundred. Plus zero point two multiplied by seventy-five.
Hmm.
And that will give us ninety-five. So, with that being said, what do you think the optimal decision is?
Ninety-five. Uh, one eighty-two point five.
Why is that the optimal decision, Hansen?
Because it's bigger.
Correct. Because it is bigger. Why is the bigger important for maximizing? Exactly. So, we found optimal. Decision. At. Being. Optimal decision being. E V of D one. I E. A hundred and eighty-two point five. Cool, right? D. We have, what is the expected value of perfect information? Not the expected value at perfect information is of just perfect information. So the way we do that is. What happened? Did you say something? No? Okay. Look to you. D. We need to find expected value of perfect information. And if you remember from yesterday. We know that it was E V W P I minus E V W O P I. And we know that E V W O P I is what we got in C. E V W O P I is equal to. A hundred and eighty-two point five. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Yes? Good. Good, 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 good. So now to calculate E V P I, we just gotta take it with the maximum values of each, so it's gonna be seventy-five, two fifty, and a hundred. So, E V W P I. Is equal to zero point six five times two fifty, close parentheses. Plus zero point one five times a hundred. Plus zero point two times seven five. Does this make sense now that we're all awake instead of half asleep?
Hmm, uh-huh, yep.
Good.
Next one, this is number four, right?
Yeah.
The problem, yeah. Okay, now, uh, I wanna. I wanna be clear on the problem fives.
Okay, so. The way we do it is we get a hundred percent on a Quizlet and then we go to a different problem. So if you help us get a hundred percent on a Quizlet, we'll go to problem five.
Okay.
That way we don't over focus. And it'll be a hundred and ninety-two point five. Equals to E V W P I. Therefore, E V P I, the value of, what the hell happened there? Screen froze. E V P I. Will be equal to. A hundred and ninety-two point five minus a hundred and eighty-two point five, which is equal to ten. Back to Quizlets, okay? Taking your test. We're gonna make it twenty-one. That way we all get seven questions. I'll go first, then Hansen, then you. Concerned with finding the shortest path in a network from one node to another node, that is the shortest. You're up, Hansen.
Oh. You face the oppose, conservative oppose. Three commonly used criteria.
You're up.
Uh, me?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't think which all variables are restricted to be integers called an all, all integer.
Is the sum of weighted payoffs for the decision alternative? Shit. Mm-hmm. Is the sum. Efficiency sample formation. I don't know this one. Crap, I don't remember this one. No!
Sum of the weight, the sum of the weight, the sum, sum, you see, the sum.
It's C? Thank you, Larry. You're up, Hansen.
Remove the corresponding decision variable. Because unacceptable. A.
A, perfect. You're up.
Corresponds to the decision alternatives. Dude, oh. Uh. Uh, I believe it's, um. Oh. I believe this is C. No, no, not, not that, sorry, I said B, sorry, I know. Um, that one, yes.
That's B. So for everyone knows, it's A, B, C, D.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's just how we're gonna rule it. Good decision analysis includes risk analysis that provides probability information about the favorable as well as unfavorable consequences that may occur. You're up.
Hmm. That connecting the last show the direction of our influence. Show the difference, it's not an ox.
You're up.
Such transportation program or general purpose linear programming codes. Uh.
I know this one. What about you?
I am not sure about this one. Uh. I know it's not A, and I know it's not. B, I know it's not C.
It is C.
I, no, I say, I know it's not C, yeah, so it's.
It is C. Yep, even Larry agrees.
Hmm.
Okay, if they're equal to each other. Assuming they're equal to each other. That means that they are prerequisite, I believe. Because if we go back to say problem one, where both had to be undertaken. It was X three minus X five equal to zero. Correct, Roger J. You're up, Hansen.
Transportation, transshipment, assignment, short, short, and maximum. Examples of.
You're next.
Expected value approach, um. Okay, uh, I feel bad. Eh, if problem is given vision regarding the states. We used to. I know it's not B. I don't think it's C, so it's either A or D. Hmm. Think it's, I think it's D.
E, yeah.
Transportation problems in which a shipment may move through intermediate nodes, transshipment nodes before reaching a particular destination node. Wait, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. Intermediate nodes, oh, it's transport problems. You're up, Hansen.
Sh- shipment problems, oh, the LP that results from dropping. The integral requirements called the. LP relaxation.
You're up.
Uh, depict decision nodes. This is the square.
Yeah, you know how we all know this? Because we all got sick of drawing trees.
Yes.
Well, more like you guys got sick of watching me draw trees.
Hmm.
Your turn, Hansen.
Oh. Oh, no, that's you.
Oh, me?
Oh, it's me.
Yeah.
Other criteria. Other criteria include time and cost. Neither time nor cost are necessarily linearly related to distance. The criterion to be minimized in the shortest route problem is not limited to distance, even though the term shortest is used describing the procedure.
Hence, the maximum possible cost is minimized. So. Hmm. The maximum possible cost is minimized. If the pay, oh, yeah, it's D.
D, good.
D. Maximum possible return.
Okay, you're up.
The consequence resulting from a specific combination of a decision, a certain, and a stationager is a uh I know it's not A, I know it's not C, so so it's either B or D. Hmm. I think we answered this before. Say it again.
We answered all of them already.
Yeah. I think it's B?
No, it's not risk analysis. It's, it's C.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, so I said B.
No, A, B, C, D.
I, I, I put A, B, and then C is the one on the bottom left.
Sorry. I should have been more clear with that. Minimize the total cost assignment of M workers to M jobs, given that the cost of worker I per for a job is C I J assumes all workers are assigned to each jobs performed. This is what the assignment problem seeks to do. Go, Hanson.
Uh, go on. Um, uh, go on, not to call your presentation. Or not to go again. Uh, decision tree. D.
You're up.
If the states and measures are best probability values available at that time, the states and measures are the best probability values available at that time. What? I don't remember this. I don't think I okay, so I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's B. Are you, are you gonna use a decision meeting with problem? Uh, regarding likely to state initiation available, R? I don't thi- I don't think it's C. Two, so then. A or B? Hmm, frequently decision makes, run higher probably estimates for three. A or D? I think it's D.
I would say D. What does Larry say? Larry says D as well.
Uh, frequently decision makers to have a higher probability estimates for frequently decision makers have a higher, yeah, I feel like it is D. Yeah. Yeah, that's the one that makes sense.
We got a hundred percent!
There you go.
Yeah!
Let's go.
We are doing so much better than we did last night.
Yeah.
This night was terrible. Okay. Problem five. The following payoff table shows the profit for a decision maker. No, decision problem. I apparently cannot spell today. With two states of nature and two decision alternatives. Okay? And the table will go as follows. It is decision, alternative, S one, S two. And then up here, we're going to have state of nature. D one, D two. And we shall have ten, one. Here will be four and three. Use graphical sensitivity analysis to determine the range of probabilities of state of nature S one for which each of the decision alternatives has the largest expected value. That's A. And then I'll have B as well.
Yeah.
Suppose P of S one equals to zero point two and P of S two is equal to zero point eight. What is the best decision? Using the expected value approach? Okay. Okay. R is nature S one. Okay. Okay, 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 okay. So first, I gotta set up a ground rule, okay? An actual ground rule, because this is something that we failed to establish last time, and it made explaining this a real big pain. Remember that? So the first rule of thumb is remember the formula. Remember formula. And the formula goes as follows. E V open parentheses of D, underscore X. And I say subscript X because DX is derivative. Is equal to P of S one plus P oh, my bad. Plus one minus P.
One minus P, yeah.
Close parentheses multiplied by S two. This is a formula you need to remember. If you can't remember this formula, good luck. Why is everyone? Okay, seriously, how is that every collaboration video I do, one person has to have terrible hiccups? Okay, so we have to determine the range of probabilities of state of nature S one, so we only care about S one finding. Therefore, let's go. E V of D, of D one is equal to P of, what is S one in this case? S one is ten.
Ten.
Close parentheses, plus one minus P multiplied by one?
S two. Or?
Yeah, S two is one.
Okay.
And that in turn will give us ten P plus three capital P. Plus one minus P, which is equal to nine P plus one.
Ten P plus, okay.
Okay? Does this make sense so far?
Yes.
Hanson, does this make sense to you as well?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to do E V of D two. Which will be equal to P times four plus one minus P, close parentheses multiplied by three. Therefore, it'll equal four P plus three minus three P. It'll equal P plus three. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And now, remember that this is the range of probabilities of state of nature S one, okay? You're looking for S one. That is why we picked what I did. So, in other words, if E V okay, if E V D one is greater than E V of D two, then we select D one. To explain that, we have to show it by comparison, so in essence, nine P plus one is greater than P plus three. And now we're going to do what every mathematician wants to do instinctively and solve for your variable. Eight P plus one is greater than three. Eight P is greater than two, P is equal to one over four, which is equal to zero point two five. Okay? Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Yes or no?
Yes. So, P is one over four, right? Three. E V D one, E V D two, okay?
Okay.
Hmm. Right, so the P is one over four, right?
Yes. Oh, thank you for catching that.
Yeah. One over four.
This is a two.
That looks like one over nine now.
That's not a nine. Therefore, we will do P greater than z- zero point two five. There we go, D one. At P less than zero point two five, semicolon, D two. And at P equal zero point two five, semicolon, D one or D two. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Are you absolutely sure?
So, so it's P point twenty-five D one, and then you do oh, is that greater than? P is greater than?
Yeah.
Point twenty-five D one, and then less than point twenty-five D two?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Try to be clear.
Now we're gonna get to the next section. B. Suppose S one is equal to zero point two and S two is equal to zero point eight, what is the best decision? Well, in this instance, given that, you see how P, P of S one in B is equal to zero point two? You see that?
Yes.
Because it's zero point two, that means P of P is less than zero point two five, therefore we select D two.
Okay.
We select D two.
Yeah, cuz this is, is this, because this is a minimization problem, right? That's why we select point two?
This is not a minimization problem.
Oh, but then why did we select point two?
Because zero point two is smaller than zero point two five.
Yeah, aren't we supposed to pick the bigger one?
No, we're supposed to pick the one that corresponds.
Corresponds? One that corresponds.
We could write underlined.
Yeah, okay. Hmm. Okay, so P is equal to one. Okay.
Good.
Okay, okay, cuz P is equal to point twenty-five, right? Right, P is equal to point twenty-five?
Yes.
So the first one, P is greater than point twenty-five, doesn't, it's, it's not true. And then the P uh, is equal to, wait. Oh, okay, okay, I see, I see. All right, all right.
You, you got it?
D two. Yes, now I get it, yeah.
D two is P plus three. Therefore, it's going to be zero point two plus three is equal to three point two. And now let's do P of S two. It's equal to zero point eight. Zero point eight, as you can tell, is actually bigger. Right? Am I right?
Wait, P S two equal to zero point eight?
Yeah.
Or Y? Mm-hmm, plus three, yeah, but three point. Oh, oh, P S two equal to zero point eight, okay. Seriously, right here, okay? Yes.
Okay, so in this instance, we select D one. And D one was nine P plus one. Therefore, we're going to get I think it's, uh, eight point two? Yeah. So this equals eight point two. And the reason for that is because nine times eight is seventy-two, move in a decimal, it becomes seven point two plus one, eight point two.
Nine P plus one.
These are your answers for C. For B.
Wait, wait. Oh, wait, are we minimizing?
No, we're not minimizing.
So why do we use nine P plus one equal to eight point two?
Because we're getting, we're trying to get the objective, we're trying to get the let me, let me see what it's exactly called in the problem. It's called the best decision. When you're using the best decision and it's not in terms of, and it's not in terms of cost, you want the bigger number. Yes or no?
So nine, nine P, P equal to zero point eight, so that's seven point two plus one, so it's eight point.
Yeah. Does this make sense?
I'm still confused. Yeah. Aren't we supposed to use the nine, uh, multiplied by three by two, and then plus one?
Okay, so no, it's, it's nine multiplied by zero point eight. Cuz this is your P.
Yeah, P S two, we are using S two?
Yes, we're using S two. Because you have to check for both. See?
Wait, wait, what?
Okay, your best decision is P S two equal to zero point eight. It's eight point two, it's the biggest one.
Oh, nine, hmm. Nine P plus one, plus one. Hmm. What was for audio? Nine P plus one. Hmm. Okay.
You just got here.
Oh. Nine P plus one. Look, I didn't sleep well, all right? I, I, I was doing a final.
Oh, okay, what to do?
Yeah, I, I did, I, I was, I was doing a online final last night, so I didn't really sleep well. Yeah. Online final. Yeah. But this is my only, my, my last final though, so.
Look, look, the reason? Okay, what are you guys confused on for this section? I wanna know the answer.
Uh. Nine P plus one and the P. What? We're comparing. Why do we need the eight point two? Don't we need just the three point two? Like, after we did the three point two, are, are we done?
No, okay, okay, no, the three point two comes from S one. We still need to do S two, though.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And, and to show the math, because I don't think you guys believe me.
No, it's, um, it, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm just like, just thinking about, you know, like, okay, like we, yeah, okay, we did the, the, the S one, right?
Yeah.
Why, why use the P three, P plus three on S one, and then you use the N, P plus one on S two?
Because zero point two is smaller than zero point two five, therefore we do it on D two. But zero point eight is bigger than zero point two five, therefore we do T, D one.
Oh, for, there are two different things. We are calculating for P S one and.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're comparing these two, P S one, P S two.
And I did the math here to show you that it is eight point two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I, 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 I know how you got the eight point two, just okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
I, I get the three point two, yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's much more clear now than yesterday.
Yeah, cuz we're awake and I can explain things properly.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's much more clear now.
Hanson, are you still confused about something?
Oh, A pi two is bigger, is optimal. Oh, I find it confusing that P S one, we're using the value of D two to calculate. Oh, I find it confusing that P S one, we're using the value of D two to calculate. And then P S two, we're using a value of D one to calculate.
Okay, so the reason we're doing that, Hanson, is because you, you see this, you see this section here, right?
S one, zero part two.
Right? We're going to use D two because of this section. D two. Right? Zero point two is less than zero point two five?
Yes.
Therefore, we choose D two.
Okay, we use the tool here, okay.
Whereas over here. Zero point eight is greater than zero point two five, is that correct?
Hmm, yes.
Therefore, we use D one. Good?
Now I get it.
Now you get it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Hanson gets it, do you get it?
Yes, I get it, I get it.
Yay, the power of being awake for once.
Yeah, so it's much, it's really clear now.
Good. Good, good, good.
And you were able to explain it too, so, okay.
Let's get back to another quizlet. You know what, I'm gonna give you guys the option. Given that we just did all the problems that from the practice, after we get another hundred percent, you wanna do homework, third, homework seven, six or five?
Almost five, I guess, because they undo it yesterday.
Okay. I'll start. Sequence of decisions and chance outcomes where decision chosen depend on yet to be determined outcomes of events. A sequence of decisions. And chance outcomes where the decision chosen. I think that's a decision alternatives? Or is it, yeah? You're up.
Hmm, and I'll go less regrettable or an opportunity. Hmm. Regret table on the opportunity table. Yeah, it's the minimax, it's B, minimax with approach.
You're up.
Uh, corresponds to the, the states of nature. Um, decision tree square nodes, in a decision tree round nodes. I think it's, uh, B.
B?
B.
It's not a decision strategy, it's decision tree round nodes. Minimize total shipping cost.
Wait, oh, I read it wrong, go back, go back. Oh, never mind, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay, minimize the total shipping costs and transporting goods from M origins to N destinations. When the unit shipping cost from an origin I to a destination J is C I J. This is what the transportation problem seeks to.
Transport, wow, okay, satisfy customer demand for a product at minimum cost. There is the supply chain are designed to deep. Uh, X J less than or equal to X I or X J minus X size equals to zero. Um, this is A.
Minimum of the maximum regret. The decision chose the one corresponding to the.
A logical representation for the problem. It's a deci- the, the season tree. A model which can be represented by a set of nodes, a set of arcs and functions associated with the arcs in our nodes. Uh, which is a better set of nodes and arcs? This is the network model.
Alright then, my turn.
Draw.
List the minimum payoff for each decision, choose the decision with the maximum of these minimum payoffs. That's what the conservative.
Is a graphical. Is a graphical device showing the relationship among the decisions, the chance events and the concept. Graphical device. It's influence diagram. Solve as a maximization problem. It's not, it's not B's. It is A. A.
X one plus X two plus ellipses X N is less than or equal to K. Is that project, at most K hour of N projects will be completed.
Osteria probabilities, Osteria probability. Is revised probabilities are called.
You're next.
X J is equal to X I or X J minus X size equals two. The project I is a core requisite for project J.
Minimize total cost assignment of M workers to M jobs, given that the cost of worker I performing jobs J is C I J. It assumes all workers are assigned and each job is performed, this is what the assignment problem seeks to do.
If only a subset of variables are strictly to be integer, the problem is called. Mixed integer linear programs D. The optimistic approach to conservative approach, the minimax regret approach. It's not it, three commonly used criteria for decision making on probably information, learned like, yeah.
Refer to future events not under the control of the decision maker which may occur. States of nature should be defined so that they are mutually exclusive and collectively exhaustive, those are the states of nature.
Hence the maximum possible. Minimized. And see if a payoff was in terms of cost. Okay, also by saying all demands are equal to one, hence assignment problems may be solved as linear programs.
Yes.
Okay. So this one, uh, it's not A or C. So it's either B or D. I believe.
So Larry says B.
I don't think it's D, it's B.
Good.
Yeah, yep.
What did we get? Ninety-five percent, I got it wrong, it was me, it was me, it was me, I was bad, I was bad, it's decision strategy.
It's a sequence of, this, it's a sequence of decision and chance outcomes for the decision chosen de- depend on the yet to be.
Let me look at the differences, decision alternative definition.
Yeah, I get, I get confused with the, how to, um, you know, what's the difference between the two of them?
Contingency plan, so decision strategy is a contingency plan, whereas decision alternatives are different solutions.
Hmm.
It, it would be strategy cuz it's a, it's a sequence of decisions and chance outcomes where it'll depend on, if it depends on, it's a strategy. Otherwise, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And then the alternative is what?
Alternative is just a list of solutions. Take a new test. Extra agents simply remain unassigned, that is number of agents exceed number of tasks, you're up.
A balanced transportation. Treatable solution balanced transportation problems are. It's a balanced transportation problem. A.
A.
Uh, so sorry, consumer demand for a product at minimum cost. Uh, um, that would be B.
Is the increase in the expected profit that would result if one knew with certainty which state of nature would occur. That is the expected value of perfect information.
For decision alternative will shows the possible payoff. For the decision alternatives, unknown with their associated probabilities. Um, the risk profile.
Risk profile, understood.
Posterior probabilities. Uh, that will be B.
Regret table and opportunity loss table, that is, uh, what is required in a minimax regret approach.
And L P in which all the variables will strictly to be integers. Integer, all integer linear program.
Okay. Just so I, just so I know I'm not crazy, the chapters we're doing for this final are six, seven and thirteen, correct?
Yes. Uh, message, Andrew, the last minute, say, there's also one, two, three. What? No, 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 it's just a second half.
Suddenly, so, okay.
The, no, 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 X one plus X two plus X N is, is less than or equal to K. At most K hour of N project will be completed.
Connecting the nodes to show the different direction of influence lines arcs. You're up, Hanson.
So solve as a maximization, the maximization problem.
What do you think it is?
Yeah, Simon, five, one.
Solve a maximization problem. Uh, that is evaluated in terms of revenue or profit. I'm gonna go with A, what about you, King?
Yeah, A.
Yeah, A, okay. Do we all agree it's A?
Yes.
Go, King.
Oh.
Yeah.
My up?
Yeah, you're up.
Oh, L P that results from dropping the energy requirement is called D. L P, the result from drop farm is called the. What? Where is this one? Is it? I'm not sure, I don't think it's B and I don't think it's C. Is it A?
Special transportation. What, I got a message. Hi, I'm like, yeah. Special transportation program or general purpose linear programming codes. Okay, so, transport problems can be converted to larger transportation programs and solved by, you're up, Hanson.
Minimum of a maximum. The conservative approach would be. Minimum. The decision, uh, the decision chosen is a one corresponding to. A.
A?
A.
A?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, is a sequence of decision and chance outcomes when the decision chosen depends on yet to be determined outcomes of chance events. Decision. Analysis.
Okay.
Decision analysis, wait, you sure, I don't think it's decision alternative, is it decision alternative, I, was it decision analysis?
Dude, you're asking, you're answering it.
No, I said decision analysis.
Oh, oh, shoot, okay, okay, I, I, I misheard you, okay, my bad, my bad.
Yeah.
Determine the optimal decision strategy is based on. Backward pass through the decision tree using the following steps. At chance nodes, compute the expected value by multiplying the payoff. At the end of each branch by the corresponding branch probabilities. At decision nodes, select the decision branch that leads to the best expected. That leads to the best. Hold on. Expected value, this expected value becomes the expected value of the decision node.
Hmm.
That is what the decision strategy approaches used to do.
Minimize the total shipping cost of transport. Transporting goods from M origins is with a side to N destinations is with. Demand DJ, when the unit shipping cost from an origin I. To a destination J is C I J.
And so what do you think it is?
Transportation problem six two.
Okay.
A.
You're up.
Can be used to determine how changes to the following puts affect the recommended decision alternatives. Probabilities for stage nature values of the payoffs. Oof. Shoot, what is this? Probabilities for the stage of nature. It's not D, it's not A. I am not sure with this one, oh my god. I am not sure with this one, oh my god.
Larry, what do you think it is?
It's either C or B. C or B.
C or B, you say?
C or B, yes.
Well, gotta give me the answer.
I know, I know, I know. Probabilities at the state of nature. Uh, values of the payoff. I think it's clicking right now. Uh, I really have no clear answer. Values of the payoffs. I would say it's. Risk?
Risk?
Analysis, yeah.
Why?
B, no idea.
I sense a too big analysis. I think that one is, should be C.
It's sensitivity analysis, by the way.
That's it.
The consequence resulting from a specific combination of decision alternatives is a state of nature is a payoff. Go, Hanson.
Can be developed for the maximum flow. Maximum flow problem. And B, a capi- capacitated transshipment model. A capacitated. Transshipment model.
Okay.
So B.
Uh, remove the corresponding decision variable.
Come on, you got this.
This is. This is C. Oh, shit.
Who got it wrong? Okay.
Who is that?
Decision strategy.
That's you, that's you, King.
Oh, that's me, yeah, that's me, that's me, ah.
Yet to be determined outcome of a chance events decision strategy.
Ah.
Curious decisions.
God damn it, that is me, that is me.
Yep.
Because. I didn't know the difference, I swear to god. Decision strategy is analysis, there's a difference between a decision strategy, this analysis and decision alternative.
Let's look at what a decision analysis is.
Yeah.
Systematic quantitative and visual approach to making strategic business decisions.
Hmm.
The many visual approach.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I, I gotta answer this one. So. MG, someone who's in the Discord chat but for some reason won't, won't talk to us. He's, he wrote for question four. Why did he put zero, I mean, why did he put point two? Not. Point twenty on the tree. Problem. For. S three. Okay, so MG, I'm gonna tell you right now. Uh, just, uh, for the sake of future statements, zero point two is equal to zero point twenty. Does that make sense? That's why he did it because they mean the same thing. He just did it to save space.
Six, wait.
MG, does that make sense?
Two by two equals to zero by two.
Yeah, that's a point. Um, I, I only did that because MG's asking that in the Discord chat. You guys can see I'm not going crazy. Okay. Two equals zero point twenty, that's why. Okay, let's go again. Create a new test. Minimize total cost assignment of M workers to M jobs, given that cost of worker I performing job J is C I J. Assumes all workers are assigned to each job is performed. This is what an assignment problem seeks to do. You're up, Hanson.
It's a sequence of decision and the chance outcome. A.
Extra agents simply remain unassigned. That would be C.
All supplies and all demands are equal to one, hence assignment problems may be solved as linear problems. That is a special assignment problem. We're in. A special assignment problem is a special case of the transportation problem. Wait. No, 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 no.
One.
You're up, Hanson.
No modification for LP formulation is necessary. No modification. Frequently decision makers have been limited. Hmm, hold on, um. LP formulation, no modification is necessary. Okay, so total supply exists total demand. C.
Refers to future events on the legal decision maker which may occur. States of nature should be defined so that they are mutually exclusive and collectively exhaustive. States of nature.
The big consequence, no designments.
For answer the decision alternatives, uh. So in a decision tree square nodes.
XJ less than or equal to XI or XJ minus XI is equals to zero. Should we show this again?
Larry, you got this.
I believe it's C.
Why?
Wait, let me think about it again. No, 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 it's a conditional. What am I talking about? It's D.
Are you sure?
Oh my god, why am I, why am I confused with this?
You got this.
No, you are. Uh, sorry. No, I'm. I don't thi- I think it's core requisite.
Why would it be a core requisite?
Hmm. Cause. Wait, cause XJ, see, cause XY. Minus XI is equals to zero, damn. No, I'm gonna go with conditional. I think it's a conditional, so let's go with that conditional.
Okay. If only a subset of variables are restricted to be integers, the problem is called a mixed integer linear program. Go, Hanson.
A model which can be represented by. Oh, it's a, it's a network model. C.
The LP that results from dropping the energy requirement is called the. The in, dropping the integer requirement is called the LP relaxation.
They are mutually exclusive. Hanson.
You pick a chance nodes, chance. Chance nodes is, it's a, another arc. Oh, oh no, it's all circles or, or ovals.
Hence, the minimum possible payoff is maximize. Oh no, not this one again. Uh, version is used, maximum this. It is A.
The ratio of EBSI to EPI. Is the efficiency of sample information.
We, uh, C and SI and SXJ represent. Estimating whether project I and J have been completed, the following special constraints may be formulated.
Gentlemen, come on, this one's easy.
Um, binary, yeah, binary.
King, go for it.
Binary.
The decision chosen is the ones corresponding to the minimum of the maximum regrets. You're up.
A decision alternative shows the possible payoffs for the decision alternatives along with the. A risk profile. A. So, A.
Solve as a maximization problem. The objective is maximizing profit or revenue.
Yes.
Assignment alternatives are evaluated in terms of.
Yes, that one.
Yeah.
A.
We're the best.
Oh, yes.
Got this.
Okay. So. We've been at this for two hours and forty-three minutes. I propose a lunch break.
Take my break.
Yeah, lunch break, deal?
Yeah, deal.
Okay. Okay, we'll be back in half hour to forty-five minutes. See you guys then.
Alright.
See you, done.
Be here.